April 18th, New Market School Board Meeting. I am sitting here again because our Chair has had a death in her family. So she won't be with us again tonight, but we are wishing her well and sending her prayers and good thoughts. Hope to have her back soon. So with that, would you lead us in the Fledgling Agents?
Fledgling Agents. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a holy and justice for all.
Should we move into recognitions?
Read the mission statement.
Oh, yeah. All right, now I'll read the mission statement. The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society.
Now we will do some recognitions. Join me. First recognition is one of our junior, senior high school teachers who received a statewide award recently, so I'm going to call her up first and then talk about it. Venra Gattanini. Join me, please. Thank you. Venra is woodworking teacher at the junior, senior high school. She was recently selected as the New Hampshire Association of Woodworking Teachers, 2013 Teacher of the Year, which is terrific.
Thank you.
But I'm not, I'm not going to stop there. In 2009, she was chosen by the New Hampshire Eddie's Award for Excellence in Education Program, it's run by DOE, as New Hampshire Technology Education Teacher of the Year. So this is, this year is not new territory. She's been Teacher of the Year before. Terrific teacher, a year ago participated in the, the program that we set up for teachers through Phillips Exeter Academy. And, and is National Honor Society Advisor, just a really valued member of our school community, and it's great to see her receive this honor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You sure can, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to share something with you guys. I, I don't know, I don't always get these sorts of emails from students, and so this was a student who's actually, he was struggling in school and he actually dropped out and got his GED, but he just wrote me about a month ago, and he said, "Hey, Gat, I was just looking at some of my woodwork that I did in your class. Made me want to thank you for everything you taught me. Just the other day I built a makeshift shelf out of an old bed frame that broke. When I went to put it in my closet, it was a quarter inch off from fitting. It made me think, wow, Gat really is a great teacher if I can get something that close without her being there." I would get so frustrated during your class when my measurements didn't end upright and my project looked dumb. Every time that happened, you were able to coach me to make what I did wrong in my project right. That lesson has gone a long way in my life so far, and I'm very thankful, so thank you." So this email just made me remember why I went into teaching in the first place, and it wasn't about making like great curriculum or anything like that, but it was to just make a difference in students' lives, so thank you very much.
The second set of recognitions deal with student leadership, and that's been a theme for us all year long, is to try to acknowledge student leadership across the grades, and we have an opportunity tonight. And to help assist in that, I'm going to ask fifth grade teacher Shayna Thorell to come up and join us. The Shayna is, is a key leader amongst fifth grade teachers in the Enterprise City Program, which is just a terrific school to career program. And I asked her first to explain a little bit about it, because I know we have some new board members who may not really know what it's all about, and I think it'd be helpful to hear from her.
Sure. I was going to write something up tonight, but I thought it, it's hard to put Enterprise City into words in just, in just a couple of minutes, but I'm trying my, my hardest. Enterprise City is a, is a field trip, but it's not just a field trip. It is about 30 hours of curriculum work in the classroom before we actually go to Dover on this fabulous day to a, a facility called Enterprise City. And what we do in that day is it's a simulated city that the fifth graders run on their own. And so the 30 hours of curriculum work deals with learning about the economy, the idea of wants versus needs, and opportunity cost, and they learn how to write checks and keep a checkbook. They write resumes and job applications. They go through interviews with some of our administrators, and then they are assigned a job for the day. And they go to Enterprise City and run the city for the day. There's 14 businesses there. Every business has an owner or a managerial leader. Every business has an accountant, and then depending on the type of business, there's retail businesses, a radio station, snack shop, so on, bank, city hall, you're going to meet a couple of our city hall members today. And these 10, 11-year-olds go and run, run the city for the day, and it's an incredible learning experience for them. And we are going to recognize Katie and Declan, but I do want to say that all of the fifth graders deserve to be recognized. This was an incredible year. Every one of them exhibited leadership skills, or managerial skills, or teamwork skills on that day, so we were really pleased with, with their work this year at Enterprise City. So, thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I would love to be able to recognize them all, but couldn't possibly bring them here all this evening. But, yeah, I understood that these two were, they're elected positions as opposed to assigned.
These are elected positions, right. The only two elected positions.
So, that's, that's how they, they got here. So first will be the mayor, let me see, where did my note go? Right, the mayor of Enterprise City, Catherine Day. Congratulations. I'm glad you did that.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Why don't you stay up here, okay? Stay right up here, okay? And then I think it was Judge Declan McCarthy. Declan. Congratulations. Thank you. I just want to thank, thank you, and thank you folks for the job that you did, because I've been to Enterprise City and seen it run. It's just a great learning experience, and, and thank you for providing that, and thank you for providing your leadership on that day. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll take about a five-minute recess now, so that board members can greet these honored guests, and, and then we'll resume the meeting after five minutes.
But it's nice, I love it.
I know.
And my uncle's 45 minutes away.
That's good.
So if I really need something, I can hit it right there. Well, Deluxe Food Plan.
I want to put you on the spot or anything.
Yeah, on my birthday.
Right.
So.
And get your Deluxe Food Plan, so you know.
Important to have options.
Okay.
I know, my bad.
Great guy.
Claire. I'll go back to my thought. I don't have a lesson.
When she came in, there was that. I'm a little jealous. Hey, I'm not angry, I'm jealous.
Hey. This is the part where we welcome visitors to come and speak. If there's anyone that would like to come and make some comments, we'd love to have them. Oh, ooh, they're, they're fighting over it now. This is good.
Hi, I'm Toni Weinstein, 275 Ash Swamp Road. And I wanted, I know usually you ask that this is not agenda items, and so I guess technically this is an agenda item, but I wanted to thank Martha Fuller-Clark for being here, and, and just bring up a couple of concerns that I have. That have to do with your role. Obviously, I'm, I'm sure that you're aware of New Market's facility crisis. And so my first concern is about school building aid. And the fact that, I didn't prepare anything, so I'm, and the fact that, I, I think that two years, waiting another two years just wipes our options off the table. And as a parent and as a taxpayer, it's troubling, to say the least. So, so that's my first issue. And then my second is just, I think the overall downsizing, or downshifting from the state to the towns, because we, you know, we, we focus a lot on the school facility, but our district has cut 15 and a half positions in the last three years. And I, it, it pains me as a parent and as a community member. I think this has been an emotional week for so many people, but the thought of not being able to remain in my town because, because we're not adequately supporting education. And that's, and that's partly the town's responsibility, but also the state's responsibility. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as, as a parent and as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Lazarus, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the New Market Teachers Association. Tonight I'd like to respond to the discussion about teacher evaluations that took place at the last board meeting. Dr. Hayes addressed the committee with a proposal, or school board, with a proposal to adopt a new teacher evaluation tool. It's, to many, it seemed, the impression was that some of the future of the New Hampshire Board of Education will require that this support and evaluation system must be implemented in all school districts. The system is an option for school districts, not a requirement. Districts are free to choose to adopt all or a part of the system, or choose not to use any of it. The New Market District has been using the Danielson Evaluation System for more than 10 years. This evaluation tool is made for better feedback for teachers, and has been a positive evaluation tool. Next year, our school district, the teachers and administrators will be implementing the Common Core State Standards. This is an enormous undertaking, and it should be the main focus of New Market educators. As our district makes these sweeping curriculum changes, and a new student test is implemented, historically it has seen test scores shift, resulting in huge shifts. It does not make sense to rush to change the evaluation system until the Common Core Standards and Testing Cycle have been completely implemented. My colleagues and I are professional educators, and as professionals, we are constantly trying to improve our instruction. We expect the board and administrators to treat us as professionals, and in terms of making changes to an evaluation system, that means that all changes need to go through a committee where all parties are represented. A process which should happen with much forethought and collaboration with all aspects taken into account, such as mentoring, professional development, and data consideration. NTA members are a vital part of this conversation, and we look forward to having this conversation with the board and administrators. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Were there any other people that would like to make comments? Seeing none, I guess we can move on to approval of minutes. You ladies, some of you just got your packets. Are you okay to go ahead with this? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th, 2013 school board meeting.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, goes on. We did not have a non-public. So now we move on to committee reports. So Emma, what's our countdown to date, for days?
Well, not including, oh, including vacations and weekends, because I like to count it all down, because that might, it might count. It's 58 days.
58, okay, good.
Well, today we had our Wellness Day with the inspirational speaker Dwight Davis. I think he did a really amazing job speaking to both the sixth graders and the 12th graders at the same time, because sometimes that's hard with such an age difference, but I think he really made a difference in all, every grade. Also, we had the activities, which included things like Tai Chi, meditation, managing money, archery, massage therapy, pet therapy, and a lot more. I did Zumba, had a great time. I hear there was a dog, my brother was pretty excited about that, for pet therapy. But also, Spring Spirit Week is coming to a close. Tomorrow's the final assembly, the end of the day. Quarter three grades will be released on Infinite Campus tomorrow. Talton Night was a success, and the winners were third place Ariel Benjor, second place Alex Chase, and first was Hannah and Caroline Davenport, Hannah Wood. I say Hannah like everyone knows Hannah, but it's probably true, I don't know. This past Tuesday was Jump Rope for Heart at the elementary school. Baseball, there are two to one, or two for one, and softball is 0 for 3. And break is next week, which is exciting. I'll be going to Virginia, so.
Oh. Woo-hoo. Thank you. You want to have any questions from them? Okay.
That's because that's where you're going to school.
Yeah.
Nice. All right, Mr. Hayes, Dr. Hayes?
I will. Just to piggyback on the Wellness Day, it's just a terrific program all the way around for people, and I put on your, on your desk tonight the, the schedule, so you get to see everything that they got to choose from. You can see that there were four sessions that ran until 11 o'clock. All the presenters showed up, which is wonderful when you're coordinating something like this, but just a great array of, of things, and I, I know it was very well-received at the school, so very, very pleased with the job that Lisa Compton, I'm sure others did, but Lisa, I'm sure headed it up, and it was just a terrific day. I have also put on your, on your desk the Elementary School Newsletter, so you get the chance to read that. I just thought I'd comment today, because today was just kind of a, you know, I do visit the schools, but today just kind of really struck me. I went to two fourth grades and a third grade, and there was just unique stuff going on in every, every room. So when I, first when I went to Mrs. Williamson's room, it was, it was an activity in getting to know the states. Every student had to choose a state, prepare a poster that communicated what's essential things to know about the state, but then also had to bring in a special food from that state. So you had to go around and do certain things before you could partake of the food, and it was really, it was really just very well done. It was fun to be in. And then I went to see Mrs. Rodeo's class, just down the hall, and we recently got an announcement from the, I'm not sure where in the state, it might have been Tourism Bureau or something, but they wanted fourth grade classes to put together a video that would help in promoting state and state tourism. So her fourth grade class actually did do that, and so I didn't see the video, because you can't see it until it's been judged, but several of the student groups did do some of their, their rap songs for me that, you know, that were included, and it was really cute, and things that they, they put together themselves. And, and then I went to third grade Mrs. Willetts, and, and came upon two students who were reading from a brochure that, and the time I got there, they were talking about things to bring on your trip. So it was a brochure about a trip, and, and the things just didn't mesh for me until I took Mrs. Willetts aside, and she said, "These are about the planets." So they had to do a brochure about a tri, I was listening to a brochure about a trip to Mercury, which was really kind of cool, and so anyway, I just, I just had fun in all three rooms. There was nothing routine in my, my day there, so. The last thing that I would comment about is, and I, and I sent you an email a couple of days ago, I think, about it, is I need, we need two members of the school board to serve on a staff evaluation committee. The, the teachers' collective bargaining agreement calls for that whenever we look at changes. The memo that I'd sent to you said, it was from the Commissioner of Education, and basically they were communicating to the federal DOE that they would require that student achievement be part of teacher evaluations in all Title I schools. Of course, one of our schools is a Title I school. So something, we need to study this, we need to study the process that I, I spoke with you about, and, and so I think the best thing to do would be to begin to form this committee, at least do some preliminary work between now and the end of June, just to set the stage and people can think about it. I'm sure the real work will begin in the fall, but need a couple volunteers or unwilling appointments, whatever it's going to be there, Madam Chair, but.
I, I would actually be really interested in.
Would you? Good.
I would appreciate the opportunity.
And you went to Elizabeth?
And also.
Terrific. Okay, that's good. I'll, I'll be in touch with you. We're still, we have to have administrative representatives and teacher representatives, and so we're still gathering names for that. I'll be in touch. Great. Let me see, do I have anything else? That's all for my superintendent's report.
Okay. And we have a facilities report.
Yeah, one second. Later on in the meeting, we'll take up, in the business portion, we'll take up the selection of a construction manager for the Science Egress Project, so I'll leave that, leave that alone, but let me bring people up to date with Oyster River. We had two, two meetings actually this week, so since we last met, those are the only two things that have really happened, at least that I've been involved with. On, on the 15th, which was Monday, there was a meeting between myself and Christine and our counterparts at Oyster River, and the purpose of the meeting was to begin to put together a framework for how, what the costs will be for a combined school, and then how that then converts into a tuition rate. So we, we had already had from the principals the analysis of how many new staff would be needed, both in support staff and regular ed staff. I believe last week is when the, the two SPED directors met to do an analysis of what they need for special education staff, and so we had that data at our meeting, so we began a framework. We really aren't in any place to, to present something like, wow, all right, we've arrived at it and we know what a public number is, but, but at least we began the process and, and we'll continue working on that. So that was on Monday. Then on Tuesday evening, the representatives from both Oyster River and New Market met, we met at the junior, senior high school this time, covered several topics. One was, again, we heard from the SPED directors on their analysis of SPED, and got to ask them questions about SPED staffing and program fits and, and things of that sort. We also, the superintendent from Oyster River also reviewed the framework that we're talking about on how to come up with tuition rates. I informed them that I've had communication from our New Market's Recreation Director and Town Administrator that they're both in support of an MOU that would allow Oyster River to use our recreation fields for athletics, should that become our high school. Made a lot of sense to them. We finished up with, I think, a very good discussion about what I've written here as value-added. You know, we, we know some of the givens, but of, of combining, but it's what more will that do for New Market? What more will that do for Oyster River students or that school in, in general? And so we had some discussion around that, and I think people are going to think more about that, more so than just additional teachers, but, so there'll be more to come. And I think we felt in terms of support from New Market or support from Oyster River, people need to see that coming together is more than just coming together, that there's, there's an enhancement to the educational lives for both sides, so. And our next, we set a date for our next meeting, it'll be May 14th, 6 o'clock, at Oyster River High School, so. So that's this, that's what we processed on Oyster River, and that's all I have for facilities.
Any questions? Okay. So now, looks like we need to move on to our program. We have State Senator Martha Fuller-Clark. Would you like to come to the microphone? Love to have you.
I, I want to really thank you for making time for me to speak with you this evening. I really appreciate being here, and before I start, I'd just like to thank all of you for serving on your school board. I know that it is one of the most difficult jobs that exist in any of your communities, and I really respect you and want to thank you for the time and the effort and the thoughtfulness that you put into one of the most significant. for the time and the effort and the thoughtfulness that you put into one of the most significant decision-making bodies in your town and in the state. So, thank you very much. For those of you who haven't met me, I am Martha Fuller Clark, no surprise. And I had the privilege of being elected last fall through District 21 to serve as your state senator for this district. Just a little bit about myself, I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I have three grown children and two very young grandchildren. As my background before I went into politics was I was a architectural historian and preservation consultant, and worked for many years to protect the architectural character of the city of Portsmouth. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. We are fortunately, or unfortunately, under another siege of development, and the challenge will be to make sure that we don't put the, our historic resources and the character of our community at risk during this new growth spurt. And I ran for the legislature to represent my city in 1990, and I served in the House for 12 years. And during that time, I sat on the Commerce Committee, where I worked a lot on health insurance and other issues that had to do with protecting consumers. I then had a little hiatus. I ran for Congress in 2000, and then again in 2002. Was not a good time for Democrats to run. So I, but I was able to return to Concord in 2004, and for six years I served as the state senator for District 24, which continued to be the city of Portsmouth that then represented the contiguous seacoast town. So it was Newcastle, Ry, Northampton, Hampton, Hampton Falls, Greenland, and Newington. And then, as a result of the census in 2010, though, and, and in 2010, I was not returned to Con- to the State House. And in the next two years after the census, there was redistricting. And so the wisdom of the majority at that time was to redistrict District 21 and District 24. So then they moved Portsmouth and Newington and combined them with the communities that I represent today, which in addition to New Market are New Fields and Lee, Madbury, Durham. Let's see, that's right, New Market, New Fields, Lee, Madbury, Durham, Newington, Portsmouth. Just make sure I don't want to leave anyone out. And it's been just a, a privilege to be able to represent all your communities, to represent the University of New Hampshire, and to really address a new range of issues going forward. When I was representing District 24, I basically, just in terms of sort of issues that I was dealing with, a lot more sort of coastal issues, the port of Portsmouth still an issue, but the coastal communities, fishing ports, things like that. And so one of the new focuses I have to look, is to look at rural areas, to look at how we can promote the farms in this area and the whole new movement that has to do with, you know, grow local, eat local, which is really an emerging new economy, a real opportunity, I think, for the state of New Hampshire. We're a little bit behind Vermont and Maine. So I'm looking to see how we can step up legislatively to support those really new endeavors. And then basically, that's sort of a food renaissance and agriculture renaissance that's taking place across the country, but it's very exciting to see what's going on within my own district and what's going on across the state. I worked very hard, both when I was in the Senate, in the House. One of the areas really had to do with the issue of educational funding and adequacy. So I have been involved in a certain number of education issues. I served on the Health and Human Services Committee as well, and I was chair of the Energy and Natural, it was then called Energy, Environment, and Economic Development. And I chaired that committee for four years. Upon my return to the Senate, I am on that committee, and it's now Energy and Natural Resources. And one of the things I might tell you is that we are working on bringing forth a bill that would make $2 million available every year to help municipalities put in place energy efficiency in their communities. And I'm hopeful that that legislation will pass and go forward, and that it's something that you should have on your radar screen just for the, and I met last night with your town council, but I just wanted to let you know, because you may be interested in looking at some point with issues surrounding your school buildings. Now, before I move on, I, I would really also, one thing I meant to comment on was to say it's just wonderful to see your student representative on the school board, and I think it's excellent that that's happened across the state, and also representing on town councils. And congratulations to you, being so well spoken and terrific to have witnessed the two fifth graders. Also wanted to let you know that we do have a page program in the Senate, and I would love to have some pages who would like to come and be on the floor of the Senate for Thursday. And if you and I, anyone here who's interested how we might be able to move that forward, I believe it's for sophomores and juniors, and they get just to participate in a, in a day in the legislature. And it would be exciting to have some students from New Market. I, I met, as Jim will tell you, with him soon after the election, to sort of be brought up to speed, though I was aware of some of your issues, and I think you have an outstanding school superintendent here. And I thought this would be a good time to come and speak with all of you, because it's crossover. And what that means is that the bills that have been filed in the House, you know, we have a very large legislature, and we see about 2,000 bills annually. And crossover means that those bills that were filed in the House have had their, assigned to committees, had their public hearings, and been voted on. And the ones that are successfully voted on then pass over to the Senate. That's why it's called crossover. And it's the same process for the bills that are filed in the Senate that cross over to the House. Now, of course, we have 400 senators and 24 state reps, so it's always a challenge for us, the second half of the year, addressing the number of bills that come off, come across. I did put in a search for education and to let you know that 25 bills were filed related to education this year. Eleven of them so far were voted ITL. ITL means inexpedient to legislate, so they have died in the respective bodies. Three bills have been retained for study in the House. I can tell you what they are, or leave this list with anyone here. One bill has been signed into law, and that was actually the bill that was to adjust some of the inequities with the funding due to interpretation at the Department of Education that turned out to leave some schools with not the adequate money that they had, had expected, that adjusted that mistake. And there are eight bills that are still in limbo, so to speak, either in the House or in the Senate. Today, the, the Senate voted on the, what we, we would call the, the tax credit bill for education to allow businesses to provide scholarships of up to $2,500 for students, and then to get an 85% tax credit for doing that. And the bill was to repeal that program that was put in place two years ago. And I supported the repeal, but unsuccessfully. The feel, the, the concern being that, first of all, we have a constitutional amendment, we have a constitutional statement that says that the state cannot give money to religious schools. So this flies in the face of our constitution. And secondly, it does mean that there, because we take our revenues from the, our principal revenues from the business profits tax, the business enterprise tax, and the room and meals tax, that if those businesses are given a tax credit, then there is less money that comes into the general fund, and that means that there is less money to be able to put into the pot, to fund public education. And I believe it's the responsibility of the state to fund public education first and foremost. And we do have a strong charter school program to allow students who might not thrive in a traditional public school to be able to access a public charter school. And in fact, I worked on legislation when I was on the Education Committee in the Senate to make sure that the word "public" was associated with charter schools, so that everybody understood that these were public schools, and they did receive public monies. So, but that bill was tabled, so the repeal will not go forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that. I also wanted to speak to the fact that I was aware and then received more specific information from your superintendent with regarding the issue of your high school and the whole building school needs that you have. I received an excellent letter from Michael Cahill about three weeks ago that provided me with some additional background, and I just wanted to note that, and thank you very much. And to then sort of bring you up to date as to where we are with the budget, and I just heard this, you know, incredibly emotional statement, and I understand the dilemma that you are facing in New Market. I did also go to the school board meeting in Durham last night, Oyster River, and I, I did get very positive vibes that they are continuing to be very interested in wanting to work with you, along with the other communities, to come up with potentially a positive solution. And what I have to tell you is that, as far as the budget is concerned, that with school building aid in the current budget that's going forward to be approved for the next two years, for the biennium of 2014, 2015, there is money to fund all of the school building aid projects that had been put on hold, but had already been agreed that the state would fund them, and that the communities went ahead and built their schools, and they'd been waiting for that money. But in the budget going forward, there, the governor's budget put in $7.2 million for new construction for the entire state. The House budget put in zero, with the understanding that if the revenues came in higher than the projections, that they would allocate those monies to go to the school building aid. As, as you know, and we heard also with the downshifting, that it has been a very, very difficult budgetary time for the last several years in Concord. One of the impacts has been, of course, with the cutbacks in the federal government and the matched dollars that were coming through for various programs, that those have, those have disappeared. There were, there are, in the governor's budget and in the House budget, some major corrections that have been made. For instance, the disability waitlist has been fully funded in this proposed budget. CHINS is being reinstated, and there also is a committee that's going forward, I co-sponsored this legislation, to look at CHINS, which, you know, it's Children in Need of Services, to see how we can make that program more effective. Because one of the problems is that we also don't have the revenues to adequately support our court system, and that even though we're able to sort of try to deal with the CHINS issue for the most severe cases by looking at them to be worked through the courts as well, there really isn't anything for them. No. So that's a, a, a huge issue, but I, just to tell you that, you know, there are, we did restore a certain amount of funding for the university system, recognizing that we have the highest tuitions in the country, that we have students who are graduating with the highest amount of debt, that the state of New Hampshire funds its higher education institutions with less money than any other state in the country. And as you know, we cut $100 million out of the university budget, more money than was cut out from any other university system, and we cut out substantial dollars for the community colleges. The monies for the community colleges in the budget are fully restored, and about half of the money going forward is restored for the university system. Now, it's very hard to solve all of these problems in just, you know, one budget cycle on the back of, of a very, very difficult budgetary time. I am happy to report that for March, that the revenues were up. We were concerned that we were going to see a deficit in the budget for 2012, 2013 of about $45 million, because the revenues were not coming in as anticipated, but they came in ahead of projections for March, so that we've closed that gap through those revenues. So now we're looking about a $15 million gap. And, but remember, we're not, this does not include the revenues for April. April is usually a very good month, and there's hope, anyway, that we'll continue to see sort of more progress in higher returns in April as opposed to the projections as well. So that just kind of sets the stage for where we're at. I would welcome the opportunity to advocate for more school building aid. And it might be possible, if we look at what happens with the revenues going forward in the second year of the biennium, that we can do that. But it's still a very, very difficult budget. And so that's kind of my report to you. I brought you some flyers about the retirement system. We know the downshifting in the retirement system has had, talk, you know, an enormous impact on local communities. We also know that the cutbacks in revenue sharing also have negatively impacted on local communities. So it's, it's not a rosy picture, but we're optimistic that it's going to improve. So I'd be happy now to answer any questions, and if I don't have the information that you want, I will make sure that I get it to you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I could come up with one or two.
Okay.
First, thank you so much for coming.
It's my pleasure to be here. I always believe it's, will be easier for all of us if we know each other than sort of dealing with, you know, a name and not a person. And I will certainly come back again in the fall. But it didn't make sense to me to come in January, because so much of the legislation might, as you saw, might not go forward, and we would be really spinning our wheels about things that now we know a little bit more, the focus has sharpened, both in terms of the budget and in terms of the legislation that's still pending.
It's, you're certainly doing your part in that we both have a role as school board members and as state representatives, senators, to have a dialogue, and I really, your outreach is wonderful. The, I guess a couple of questions regarding adding, maybe in the second year of the biennium, it sounds like if revenues are up, having money, I mean, there's a lot of ifs here, having money then more fully fund, if that's the right term, school building aid. Is there a priority list somewhere that's written into the budget, or somewhere along the way-
Well, there was a moratorium, as you know, for two years. And, and during that time, it was studied by a committee, and they came up with new criteria to be able to evaluate the schools that are applying. And it used to just be sort of first come, first served. That's no longer the case, and what I will do is get you that new criteria if you've not seen it. But it really is trying to look at communities with schools in need. One of the problems that we've had, and certainly you've run into here, is that, you know, school, you know, communities that have built into their communities financial resources are more successful at getting the bonding passed to be able to then go to the state and to apply for the extra dollars. And that if you can't get your community to agree, then you can't even put in an application. And where the funding issues are really difficult, oftentimes it's where the greatest need is for new school construction or reconstruction. I'm happy to say I worked on a bill four years ago to make it possible for schools who wish to- who wish to rehabilitate their schools rather than build new to have equal opportunity without having to seek a waiver. There are many more urban communities than this that wish to keep their schools downtown, and we needed to change the legislation so that they could do that. And it was good for Portsmouth, good for Concord, good for Keene. But, you know, here it seems that, you know, the condition of your high school is truly serious, and I would think that when you look at this criteria, that it will give you a better chance if the money is available.
So my understanding, maybe it was misinterpretation, was that the building aid program, there was another two-year moratorium?
No.
Okay, so there's a program that's just not funded?
It's just not funded. The moratorium is finished, but in the budget going forward for the next two years, currently there's minimal or no money for school building. I mean, I don't, who's going to apply for $7 million? You know, what new construction or improvements are really going to, you know? We need to put a lot more money into that school building aid, and I would hope that going forward, if we have the dollars, that we can make it our first priority.
Okay. So is school building aid competing with other programs? You mentioned CHINS and maybe some things?
Well, all programs at the state level are competing against one another because of the limited funds. But I think that, you know, we can work to sort of, you know, I think the commitment, I mean, it's not like you got no money, all right? We got money to make those communities whole that had already made a commitment and gone out and spent the money. So there are now no schools on the list because there was a moratorium, and they changed the criteria. So going forward, there is the opportunity to get your name on that list and to be able to make the case under the new criteria as to why you would deserve to be considered sooner or have more legitimacy than another community. So it will be competitive within that. Clearly, you know, everybody, if there turns out to be surplus dollars, is going to want to get those dollars. But I would hope that as a state that we could make, again, education a priority. Of course, the university would also like to be at least restored to their previous funding, but it seems it's very, very short-sighted to not put the majority of the state's resources into education because it's what's going to make us economically successful and strong going forward.
Right. There's tons of reasons to support education.
Absolutely.
From the whole graying of the state and all of those things.
I was going to say, if people haven't had a chance to read the study that came out by the New Hampshire Public Policy Institute about sort of the changing character of New Hampshire going forward, it's a report that was issued in the fall of 2012. It deals with the whole issue of the Silver Tsunami and the loss of young people going out of state, partially because our education costs here, both at the community college and the university system, are so high. It also is looking at strengthening the STEM program, and I think one of the things that we need to do for our K through 12 is to really work to build in more science and technology and math and engineering. And I know that one of the issues that we're seeing, that we're hearing from higher ed is that most of our students should have four years of high school math in order to be able to enter into any of the programs after they graduate. So, and looking at the, I didn't work on the group that worked on the core standards, but I believe that there's a lot more emphasis. But I also think we need a well-rounded education, and we don't want to do it at the expense of other important subjects. So we have to continue to find that balance. I know that we're also seeing colleges look at going perhaps year-round with, so students could get through in three years, it would be less expensive. You don't have the new facility that you need, but once you put money into those facilities, that they should sit unused for three or four months makes no sense in the kind of economy we live in today. So I think we're also hoping to find ways, there are other states that do run their schools year-round. There's a lot of challenges, right?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
To get back to school building aid for a moment, the changes in the financing aspect of that were to say that if a district were approved for funding from the state, the concept is that 80% of whatever that amount is would come up front.
Right.
Makes wonderful sense because then it allows a community to have to bond for less. But when you look at the number of $7 million or less, that doesn't do it. In a community like ours, if we were to get 30% reimbursement, we'd be looking for around $15 million from the state, and 80% of that is $12 million. So it struck me that even when the money comes, we're not going to rise way up to those levels. And that I wondered whether there might be another look at that concept of 80%, that there might be a better way to leverage that money to approve multiple projects.
Approve multiple projects.
You know, for example, if it were $15 million for us, then maybe it's $1.5 million a year for 10 years. I don't know how, but there might be some better way to leverage that money so projects could get approved.
Right. And I think you know that for two years before the moratorium, that we paid for school building aid by bonding.
Yes.
It's not really a viable financial approach going forward because it just
No, I understand.
It keeps growing and growing and growing. But
Maybe another way to be looked at.
There may be another way, you know, and I think that is a very, very good point. Because I find personally that saying you're going to put $7.2 million into school building aid for new school building aid or renovations is laughable.
Doesn't go far at all.
It just, it doesn't go anywhere, you know? So, but I think people are aware of that. It's just where do we find the dollars?
Mm-hmm.
No. I mean, we are a state that basically, as I said, has three major sources of revenue, the building profits tax, the business enterprise tax, the women meals tax, and then the lottery. Those are the four top revenue sources for the state. The budget does, the new budget does call for increasing the cigarette tax going forward, moving it up with an increase of 20 cents on top of the 10 cents that will be restored if the revenues continue to lag. But there are very few revenue sources. The governor put forth a revenue source which is gambling, which would provide $80 million the first year for the price of a license and would provide about, if the monies that the operator predicts were to materialize, it would provide somewhere between $100 and $130 million a year. But there are a lot of associated costs with that as well because you have to expand your regulatory committee, you have to expand the police force or whatever, you know, you're going to have to put money into alternatives. And there's no guarantee that those dollars will actually materialize because frankly, in most other states, over time, the revenues have been going down. Now, there's a new casino in Maine, which right now is quite successful, but it's new. It's only eight months old. What's going to happen in two or three years when maybe the, you know, and it's just, it's just nothing but a slot barn, frankly. But, you know, will it continue to produce the revenues that it is now, or will it fall off? You know? I cannot support gambling. I do not believe that is a healthy or viable revenue source for the state. And I was pleased to see that the House came forward with a budget that does not include, gambling does not include the $80 million for the licensing. It's why they're giving less to the university than the governor did. It's why they didn't put any money into school building aid, and there are some other adjustments that they made. And each one of us have to make that decision as to whether or not, you know, we think that gambling is a good revenue source for the state or not. No. And currently, that bill is before the House. Senate Bill 152 had two hearings, well, it had a hearing all day Tuesday and all day Wednesday, and is now being considered by a number of subcommittees. So, it's important that I tell you where I stand.
Do you have anything else? Get out this, no. I know you briefly mentioned the CHINS. I was wondering if you could just, you said it was reinstated. I'm just, I mean, that's a really important, important to our community and other communities, so I was just wondering.
It's in the reinstatement of the program, and I believe it's at least for 500 kids, whereas before maybe it was 600, now it's only 50.
Okay.
And it's both in the governor's budget and in the House budget, and I believe there's a commitment in the Senate, they understand how important that program is. And clearly, we're looking at an emerging issue. I'd be interested to know what kind of an issue it is for Newmarket, but with homeless young people between the ages of 17 and 21, that is severe on the seacoast and in your communities as it is anywhere else. So I see that that's a positive step forward.
Yes, thank you. All right. I feel like we just shouldn't let you go, like we should, we've got to cap it off.
I'm happy answering, but I don't want to impinge upon your whole
It's been very helpful.
I hope it's been helpful. I hope you will reach out to me, and I'm well aware of what you need and trying to do whatever I can within the constraints to be able to help you. I do think it's very wise to at least be pursuing the option by looking with the possible use of the Oyster River. I understand some of the downsides to that too, but I think it's great that at least you're willing to investigate that with a lot of openness and interest.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. All right, that was very helpful. Now, it seems we're going to move into change to policy on graduation requirements. Mr. Andruski.
Good evening. I believe you all got a draft. We invited Sanborn Regional High School to come here today because that was a big issue about talking about competency-based education and a test for kids that did not show competency based on standardized test scores, you know, notably the kneecap that we take right now. So I believe you saw a draft. This would be something similar. I don't know if they, did they get the draft, Dr. Hayes?
Of theirs?
Yes, of theirs. Okay. I can send that to you electronically, and I'll be glad to do that. But basically, what it does, it outlines different ways in which the kids can achieve that. And the first way that it's done, if a kid does not meet competency or proficiency, let me use that word, proficiency on the state standardized test, they have to show proficiencies in other ways so that they can graduate as a graduation requirement. This goes along, they are a standards-based grading school, so it goes hand-in-nail with their standards-based grading. So there's, right now, there's four ways in which they can be assessed other ways, and that's all drawn out with the parents, the student, and also the guidance department. Ways that they do it is a student portfolio, which would highlight, so for example, if a student was not proficient in reading, they'd have to provide a portfolio by the end of, before graduation, before senior year, that would show that they are proficient in reading based on standards created by the school, also that are required, you know, through the state testing. Another way would be through a project. They could do a project or a presentation in front of the staff or a bunch of people, again, taking whatever standard that they were not proficient in and demonstrating that. Alternative classes, V-Lax, VHS right now, they do competency-based education where kids can catch up, demonstrate that competency, demonstrate that proficiency. Therefore, that would give them credit. Or taking alternative classes. And again, that are combined with what you're already teaching but would be a supplement to their curriculum. So those are the different ways that they have it. They outline it nicely, and it gives the policy, and again, it's there in draft form because they're revisiting it. They went this way about three years ago. We met with them to discuss it then. You know, we started discussing it and bringing it to your attention. That's, you know, the wave of the future, what we'd be looking at. And they did some revisions because they found out a couple of things didn't work. For example, they gave the alternative for kids, if they didn't show proficiency on kneecap testing, they could take a class at SST. Well, they found out kids were all going to SST but still weren't showing proficiency in areas that they had. So they've edited their draft policy to take that out. They also took out, you know, increasing graduation requirements. Well, if a kid was already not showing competency or proficiency in certain areas, they didn't want to increase it because they weren't making those as well. So they've learned, and I think they've got a good system, and talking to their principal, Brian Stack, they're much more comfortable with what they do now. And kids do really use this as a menu and select in an area that they can be appropriate. So it does fit in for your special education students because you work on those competencies together. So that's a major change that I wanted to highlight. I think everything else that we had discussed in prior meetings were pretty solid with you from here for any questions that you have in regards to those changes that we put forth earlier.
I have a point of clarification just to ask. When looking at those four criteria for proficiency plan, the guidance director is going to consider that and come up with a plan with the parents, the student, the guidance counselor, and the teaching team?
Yes, absolutely.
So where it says for point number three, the student will successfully complete a teacher-designated unit or units of study targeted at the non-proficient or its equivalent. Is this going to be a created curriculum, so an additional curriculum?
I can ask him that. That's why I wish Brian was here to explain it.
Oh, you're right.
This is their draft. I was trying to give you examples of what we could go forward. But that's, he was open to me, whatever questions you have, please send them to me, and he'd be glad to answer them. Knowing his job, he said, "I just can't go to other board meetings right now," and I go, "I understand."
I'm sure.
So whatever questions you do have, I'd be glad, if you can email them to me, and I will forward them along to them and be prepared with those questions next time I'm here.
Okay, great.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said because you said one of the things that they learned from doing this was they increased their graduation requirements, and that was a difficulty?
Yeah.
Well, isn't this proposal us increasing our graduation requirements?
It's meeting graduation requirements. So what they did in their previous policies is that if you needed 32 credits to graduate, now you needed 34 because you weren't proficient in an area. So
For that student.
For that student, yes. For that specific
That's not as a whole, but just that student.
Exactly.
Okay. Because I'm like, well, we're going to do the same thing if we do, okay. That makes much clearer.
And that didn't meet the needs of what they were looking at.
No.
They took that out.
Okay. Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions? So what was your desire? Did you want us to make a motion to move this?
It's not even here for a first reading yet.
No?
At some point, I think it needs to be. Maybe we take one more meeting. If you think over any questions you have, sounds like, you know, certainly Gail's got questions, and email them to Chris, and let's come back to try and answer any questions you may have, and then hopefully then the next meeting, we put it on for a first reading, and you can do as you will in the normal process then.
Well, yeah, and I think this is also an opportunity for anyone that's watching to understand that we're entertaining this. So if there's parents or anyone that has any questions, you know, come to us and, you know, because it takes all of us to come up with that, I think.
Right.
I'd just like to highlight one thing is that, given our state senators here, is that there is a requirement of four years of mathematics classes.
Already.
Already.
Right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I get to stay here?
Yes, you do.
Oh, you do, because we're, yeah, just keep on going.
Double duty today. Double duty today, that's right.
Niasse response to special progress report.
Exactly. So, as I, I told you many times, we'll go through the Niasse process. Initially, they had some concern. We were put on warning. A lot of it, you know, was, was building-related. But there was also some curriculum, things that they discussed, as well as personnel issues. As you can see, we got ten commendations in the letter for a lot of the things that we have been doing, you know, school-wide rubrics, starting to really finalize those and implement them in all of our classes. You know, including more and more community stakeholders in what we do. Looking for alternatives rather than just building new about our, our facilities, you know, we're complimented on that. So, again, this, this is a dialogue with Niasse to let them know what we're doing and that we're going to be open book and, and there's no secrets. And we're very honest in where we're at and things that we didn't complete and where we need to continue to work on. You know, they, they compliment us on, on what we're doing for the fire and life safety plan. And, you know, actually, you know, talking to them, they, they were really impressed on how quickly we're moving because we're not sitting back on that. So, that was a, a major compliment that we got. But there's also things that need to continue to be part of our report next year. Again, I have to write a report coming up next November. And in that, I also, there's stuff I have to write from the last time, but I also have to include concerns that they had. We still don't have a library and media specialist and that's something that they recommend at both buildings. They recommend that we continue to show how our school-to-career program is going to be successful if not implementing that position back. So, those are two concerns about those positions that, you know, we, we need to be open and discuss. And then, what we're going to continue to do with facilities and our fire and life safety plans. So, those will all have to be, continue to be addressed in any letters that we send and progress reports that we send out to, to Niasse. So, obviously, we didn't have the work of the construction manager and what we were, we were going to do completed. That was a project that was, you know, we were discussing because we hadn't met with the fire marshal at that time. So, that will show a lot of progress to what we're doing in our building in regards to fire and life safety in, in our facility. So, I feel very confident with that, but then it gets down to staffing. So, that's where we actually have to have conversations about our program, still doing what we do, if not excelling, without positions in our building.
You mean, instead, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
You mean, instead of hiring additional employees?
Yep.
Asking the existing staff to?
Nope. Right now, because we, we, two years ago, we had a library and media specialist and due to cuts, we cut that. So, continue to show that we're progressing or reinstate.
To finding someone for that position.
Or reinstate, you know, so...
I see, okay, thank you.
And the same this year, you know, next year will be the first year we don't have a school-to-career coordinator. You know, we're going to be supplementing that in many different areas. So, it's talking about how we're doing that and maintaining success without having that person organizing it, you know, being picked up by different areas.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And what I thought was interesting in reading through this list was, they, they say it as submit the budgetary allocation. It's not just demonstrating how successful you're doing. They want to see us putting money towards those important things and we just took that out last year. So, that, you know, I just want to make a plea to the community that, you know, we're taking away things that, I, I think we're making a step, we've made a step backwards and, and if we can, in a budgetary sense, we need to try and reinstate those positions if we can.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I had one other question. And it's really just, Samantha, I was just reading the last part and it said, "Your report should include your signature and the chair of the school's follow-up committee."
Yep.
Who is that person?
I don't, I don't think we've identified that yet, so...
Would that have been Ms. Winterbottom?
Not, not from the school board, it would be the chair of, of our committee looking at progress within the school. It, it could definitely be you, Meg.
No, 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 I wasn't volunteering.
Your hands, your hands, you saw, her hair was up.
I thought it could slide out.
No, no. I, don't pick up on me.
It's a great question though, Kelly. There's a steering committee that we had to drive this process.
Right.
So, that, that committee is still intact, you know, with, with Ms. Ballantyne, myself, Tom Pavlidis are a part of that. So, anybody can be, be part of that.
Because Ms. Winterbottom was the chair or is?
She was the, considered the chair, correct.
Yeah, okay. So, that would have to change at some point.
Correct.
Okay. I was just curious. No, I'm not volunteering.
Is your hand up again?
No. Okay. So, if we have no other questions, you get to stand there again, don't you?
No, I turn it over to the previous.
Oh, you're done, okay.
Sharing the microphone.
Middle school grade configuration report.
Let me, let me make some introductory comments here.
Okay.
Come up, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, we're, we're exploring this option with Oyster River as, as satisfying our needs for high school. But we still have a middle school that we have to provide, a middle school experience. And, and as, as I thought about it, we, certainly we have a sixth through eight middle school and we have a K-five elementary school that is pressed for space, to the point where we have two portables and we're really pressed even in, inside the building, putting things in the right spaces. And, and the thought, you know, crossed my mind, and I'm sure others as well, that if the fifth grade were to become part of the middle school, then there's likely, it's in all likelihood that the elementary school is more than adequate for the current program and may be able to enhance the current program. And so, there wouldn't have to be a construction renovation project in the future for our elementary school. And that if there's going to be one for middle school anyway, well, maybe it's a five through eight project versus a six through eight project. So, that's an important decision that's more than just dollars and cents. So, what I did a couple of months ago is ask these three folks here to investigate what the research says, what current practice says about a five through eight configuration versus a six through eight configuration, then also, what does it mean for us in our district? So, they prepared their report and I'll turn on to our CIA director.
CIA, CIA, that's me.
Pat Ballantyne.
For those of you at home, CIA means nothing federal. Oh, there you go. Well, that'll help. We'll go without the notes.
We should, you, you got a PowerPoint, don't you? That's right.
Yes. You should probably have a C.
Sit in the audience. You might turn the lights on.
No, I'm good now. I can read it. I'm good.
We don't want to have a misstep.
Whoa. Watch the steps. Everybody's comfy. Okay. The reason is, Dr. Hayes said, for our presentation.
There's an app for that.
There's an app for that. Our charge from Dr. Hayes was to research the pros and cons of various middle school models, certainly the ones with grades to, grade five to eight, and the other being our current model that we have in place, the six to eight. This is purely facts that we've put together through readings, research, visiting other schools, talking to fellow people out in the world of education. Let me give you a little background on the purpose of middle school models. We're developed so that students would have the goal of providing our, we would have the goal of providing our students with a smooth transition from the self-contained classrooms of an elementary school setting to eventually getting to the subject-based individual classrooms of an upper school. So, it was looked as the bridge between lower and then high school. When you think about some of those, oh dear. I'm not, I'm just going to give that back to you, okay?
I'll see if I can, if I can get over again.
Thank you. Okay. Did not wear my heels tonight. One of the problems being, you know, many school districts don't have the luxury of time to look at what the model really means in their district. Going down the road, we have some time on our hands to really look and explore how that might look. What could we change? What could we keep the same? And why would we do that? So, that's really why we have these different models to kind of talk through for you tonight. When you think about why we have the models and why we do things the way we have in middle school, sometimes it's been financial, you know, this is what we got to do facility-wise, this is what we got to do. We have an onslaught of people coming in, we got to find a place. We have a little different take on that tonight. So, Tom and Chris are going to present through the rest of the slides and then we'll kind of sum it up and take some questions. And know that this is the first step. This gives you kind of a base to start thinking about where you want to be and what we want to talk about in the future. Okay?
Thanks, Pat.
And as Pat mentioned, it's, you know, there, it, it's about transition, so just a little bit of the history. If we think about the background and the history, in the seventies, we had a shift towards the six, eight, and five, eight, junior high models. And so, junior high, basically, many high school kids go through, you know, a, a multi-period day. They, they have six, seven different teachers, five different teachers. That's kind of the model that evolved in the seventies. But then the eighties, one of the recognitions was middle school being such a, an age of, of social importance and the transition being too great from self-contained elementary straight to junior high, that the middle school model started, started becoming important. And middle school just, you know, smaller, smaller groups of kids, instead of, you know, it's just the sixth grade, you had teams within the sixth grade. Instead of kids having six teachers, they would have it maybe a, and a language arts and social studies teacher. So, that's kind of the middle school model and that's, that's what a big shift has, one of the big shifts of the eighties. But really, kind of, what we're talking about is, is certainly a middle school model and there, and there are certainly different ones. The main ones that we'll talk about and that we're thinking about, our current model is a six, eight model. And that's just, you have a K-five and a six through eight and then a nine through twelve. Another one that, you know, we're certainly, you know, again, just introducing for conversation based on what happens with our, our high school would be a potential five-day model. So, just want to say, those are the different models. Nationally, if we look at the numbers, who does what? About ten percent of our folks of, of, of middle schools or junior highs are five to eight schools. Sixty-five percent are six to eight and about twenty percent are seven to eight models. If we look regionally at who does what, on the left-hand side are the, the five to eight models around here. And really, what we did is we just kind of looked, for the most part, at this kind of a circle around where we are. And so, Oyster River, Dover, Raymond, Berington, East Kingston, those are all five to eight models. And then Amherst, I visited as part of this research that we were doing. And then, if we look at who's doing a six to eight, Newmarket, S.A.U. sixteen, that's the Exeter Schools, Portsmouth, Rye, and Epping. So, this is, just kind of give you some context as to, you know, who's doing what and how, how common are these different types of models?
I think I get to go next. So, you saw sort of some of the shifting patterns and, and what we tried to do is break it up socially, emotionally, physically, and academically. As you can see, there's, there's facts, you know, straight up that support on the social level, children maturing earlier. In fact, a lot of the research is telling us now that, that children are reaching puberty four months earlier every decade. So, if you look at a school model that started in the seven, in the seventies, that, that would look vastly different for an eleven or a twelve-year-old than it does now. At this point, you could make the argument, some do and a lot of the research does, with regard to brain development, the fifth graders are more like sixth to eighth graders than they are like the K-four people that they're, that they're with in, in a lot of ways now. There's a chance to structure your programs that respect sort of, not only those differences, that understand those differences, that are staffed with professionals who understand those differences, but are also able to sort of design an engaging and rigorous curriculum, which a lot of times when people think of middle schools or middle school philosophy, they, they don't think of a rigorous curriculum. But I, we would make the argument that you could, by attacking those developmental stages a little bit better, actually enhance rigor. Guiding the students through those pitfalls and being able to focus sort of social activities and, and some of the examples of that, I know, this is a town, I'll use sports for an example. Currently, our middle school teams might be sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. There might be a way to look at this where some of our extracurricular activities, whether it's sports or extracurricular, other types of extracurriculars, might look like a five, six, and seven, eight, which developmentally, I think, when you look at a sixth grader, you might identify them more like a fifth grader in some cases, in many cases, than you would identify them with a, with an eighth grader. But again, those are sort of just some findings and this is the beginnings of a conversation. The next piece, the academic considerations. The...
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
So, well, that's actually the, the same thing, but, so, for some reason, we're having some formatting issues with this. But academically, what's, what would be a little, I think, a stronger argument, the Common Core, which is coming out right now, the Common Core curriculum, the fifth grade Common Core aligns way more closely with what's happening with sixth grade through eighth than it does with K through four. So, there's a better fit nationally and where we're headed in that direction. I've heard a lot of conversation tonight, this community does a really nice job about thinking down the road with regard to their kids and, and that's really refreshing to be a part of. So, we certainly could support that. Other academic considerations would be the ability to, you know, group and regroup, whether it be heterogeneously or homogeneously, use that data to have it work for kids, to have them achieve based on their needs, and to not maybe use it so much as the group you're in now is the group that you stay in forever. The ability to move throughout groups as you improve or as you experience different things. Because one thing brain science tells us, another thing it tells us, is between the ages of eleven and fourteen and anyone that has a kid, a child in this age group knows, their brains disconnect. The left and right side of their hemispheres actually disconnects and begins to rebuild those narrow pathways. Now, you're all laughing because you know exactly what we're talking about, but to be able to build an academic program that takes that into account, but doesn't necessarily hold it against them, that sort of, that, that gives us a great opportunity for your kids. So, it's, it's nice to be able to design a program that, that sort of takes those things into mind with people who understand the age group very well.
Does it ever reconnect?
There's no definitive research as to when that happens.
We don't see any bad experiences.
My wife would probably have a similar argument. But obviously, the physical considerations, again, we look at that, you know, we talked about the early onset of puberty and things like that. But attacking that age group, again, again, if you're a parent of a child in this age group, you know that the hands-on, the kinesthetic types of approaches for students at, at this time is how they learn best. And, you know, being able to enhance things like fine arts and physical education and experiential learning and music and, and those types of activities that we could enhance. We wouldn't necessarily, in this model, be tied to a, a high school schedule in any way and we'd sort of be able to build the perfect beast, for lack of a better term, for our kids. I know Pat alluded to earlier, sometimes we do it because of space, sometimes we do it because of fiscal need, but if things go the way that, of, you know, high school changes, we would have an opportunity, if there is a positive to losing our high school, to build something that works exactly for this age group and it could really be something amazing. We'd be able to perhaps expand some intramural opportunities, both for fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth that are more designed to meet their needs. And scheduling that would support that's emerging brain science and those kinesthetic learning opportunities. So, those are some of the physical and considerations that go along with the others. Again, this is kind of a review, that, that summary. Lot of reasons why it may work. Again, the research mainly for the, for the purposes of this presentation was about five through eight. We know that, that everyone here understands the six to eight, we already have one of those. But there's certainly some components which, you know, fall out of this research that are going to help us, myself as an administrator at the junior, senior high school, take back to the building that we can start now, we don't necessarily have to wait. But the research process is, I think it's always good. that are going to help us, myself as an administrator at the junior, senior high school, take back to the building that we can start now, we don't necessarily have to wait. But the research process is, I think it's always good. It's always good to know what you don't know, and to be challenged to find new things out, which is what we want to do for our students. So, we could increase that opportunity for developing leadership skills with fifth and sixth graders. You know, something as simple as a dance, where you look at a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade dance, and now if it's a fifth and sixth grade social, which is certainly a lot more developmentally appropriate, if you can do it. And then you have your seventh and eighth grade dance. I mean, there's all those sort of little opportunities, and I see a lot of heads nodding, which leads me to believe that people have ideas popping up right now into how this could work best for our kids and our community. So, again, there's a lot of research that got us headed in a lot of good directions for kids, so.
And then just some, obviously, local considerations, because, you know, we can look at the research, but we got to look at what's going to work for our community. And if we kind of look at some of the, kind of, right-in-your-face considerations of the five-eight model and the six-eight model, you know, as an elementary principal, the idea of the five-eight model creating space for the full-day kindergarten just makes me giddy. And that's as a principal. The, you know, as Jim mentioned, the necessity to do renovations at the elementary would decrease. Better utilize the space at the junior, senior high school. If it does end up happening that our high school kids are elsewhere, then that's a lot of space unutilized, and that would be a good use of that space. And, you know, Oyster River is certainly part of the consideration, it is, they do the five-eight model. Considerations with a six-eight model, and this is by no means an exhaustive list, they were kind of the ones that conversations had stuck out to folks. You know, six-eight, it's what we know, it's consistent with our structure. It requires, you know, little change, we know it, it's familiar, we do it pretty well. You know, as a dad, as a principal, the five-eight model is just very appealing. As a dad, you know, I would, if my kid's in the fifth grade, and they say, "You're going to go to the big bed," you know, middle school, I'm like, "No, I want them in the self-contained." But as a principal, you know, I think that's probably what a lot of folks are thinking, kind of wrestling the, "Okay, I know that these things would be advantages, but that self, you know, the self-contained thing, and the changes might be hard for a parent." As a dad, I can certainly empathize with that. But, again, this is just a start to a conversation, want to throw some things out there, some facts, what the research says, and, you know, just start the conversation.
Because I was getting rushed out of your office.
Questions, comments, concerns?
My comment is, the idea of a full-day kindergarten makes me giddy.
Joanne was jumping up and down back here, you could see her.
I know, I would love that.
It was dark, but I could get the vibes.
Yeah, I love our kindergarten teachers, and I just would love for that to happen.
It would thrill me.
We all would be very thrilled, because that's where it starts.
Mine had gone out of kindergarten, obviously.
I know.
One of the other pieces that fell out of that, too, I know you saw the five-eight, six-eight thing. We've put a lot of work in this year, both building administrators, I didn't want to talk over Pat. I'm sorry.
That's a really common, I'm having some issues with this.
We started to, both administrations, along with representatives from both the elementary school and junior high school, teaching, rank...
Slow motion lift.
Have put together some recommendations and started to make some changes for that transition. So, if, in your mind, you said, "Ah, that five-to-eight argument that Tom made about having your fifth grader go to sixth, that's certainly a real thing to think about." But we've already begun to talk about how we can tighten our transitions between the two schools, so that conversation would have to continue, and should. And I think, I don't know if Joanne can speak to it, but it seems to be progressing, but we can always be better.
Well, it could be the same argument with a sixth grader on the bus with a 12th grader.
Absolutely.
You know, but I would like to say, as a mother of someone who's just graduated from elementary school and is now a sixth grader, Ms. Thoreau was her teacher last year, and I know that the fifth-grade team worked very hard on building a transitional plan, so they practiced going from class to class. They practiced kind of manipulating the environment and figuring out, as a student, you know, "Oh, you have this expectation, I'll do this, and here is a skill and strategy I can practice to become more organized." I am a classroom teacher of a fifth grade, and the first thing they say when they get into my classroom is, "I love the lockers, and I love not being in the same class all day long." And I'd like the concept that you've added in of the kinesthetic learning, because they move, they need to move. And, as all kids do, but particularly, I find, the great leap from fourth grade to fifth grade is, they need to move. And they enjoy the challenge and the structure of being in different classrooms and having different experiences.
And the shift, sort of that mindset, that piece, that four months earlier, puberty starts every decade. I mean, just in this room, we can imagine the vast differences in what kids have had to go through, and how maybe our model hasn't adapted to that yet. Or models, I mean educationally, I don't just mean a Newmarket, so. It's amazing, it's amazing stuff to think about, and we should think about it.
This is a very proactive approach, and it's making lemonade out of potential lemons. You know, to think, if our high schoolers have to leave, what do we do with the space? How can we be proactive? How can we, as my father used to say, manipulate the environment so the learning process can take place? And I'm very impressed, and so thank you very much for doing this.
I have a question from a curriculum-opportunity standpoint. It strikes me first that foreign language might be more available for a fifth grader in a middle, in this environment, where I think we've had some conversations about doing kind of a club thing after school, and that, I know, has been very popular. Are there other things along those lines that, from that kind of curriculum standpoint?
Well, we could look, I mean, we talked about keeping unified arts there in terms of, you know, Venter's program, foreign languages, the music program. Gives us, opens up a lot of opportunity, because the schedules would be able to work with that very nicely. You know, we're still looking down the road, you know, to plan five years down the road for what extra is there for curriculum. You know, we've talked about the STEM approach here, we've talked about, you know, the robotics, things like that, you know, that if we have, I know they cost money. But, you know, if we get some really, really creative thoughts going here, I think this is a really good way of looking, as you said, making lemonade out of what could be a difficult situation down the road for some people.
You know, and also, the Common Core, as somebody had mentioned, you know, the state frameworks for social studies and science is kind of together with fifth and sixth grade, so, you know, that would be at least one less thing that you, we would need to do as teachers and staff in curriculum, is looking at, "Oh, this would be great." And thank you so much for mentioning the flex grouping. You know, I mean, that's what's a really good outcome, I think, from all the things I've seen in this town. And I'm just in awe, you know, coming from a school that's very limited in their budget and ability to do that, to here. And seeing that you would use the data, and you would be able to do that, you know.
I'm very new here, I came from a large district, and what, so I hear you often lament about budgetarily. I'm amazed, day by day, what your teachers do, what our teachers do creativity-wise, what, how they continue with the building to make lemons, to make lemonade out of lemons. Your kids are phenomenal, it's just a great place to be. And the creativity that is in the building that I work in, on behalf of the teachers, is phenomenal. Because it can be tough to continually reinvent yourself, so that's worth mentioning.
Yeah, nicely said, yeah.
I'd like to let that be the last word. But I know, there's a 10,000-pound gorilla, if, for all the fifth, but next year's fifth, or the fifth graders of the future, should we go down this road, is, what happens to recess in the fifth grade? You know, we've been talking about kinesthetic learning, and the kids to get up, move around.
It's called advisory.
Yeah.
I didn't ask you.
Both of my boys, Hempstead, where I live, has a five-to-eight middle school, both of my boys went through that. So, anecdotally, to answer your question, the fifth graders had recess, the others didn't.
Yeah.
So, there was, you know, play areas that they could go to, so they still had a recess.
When, one of the things that, again, the middle school teams do really well, we have a concept called Team Time, which is in a lot of comprehensive middle schools, but not all. So, again, kudos to our school, I was here before I got here. And they sort of build in time for activity and movement, but it's a little bit more structured than free play. But it still sort of gives that free-play field that they need. I think our teachers, again, sort of have tried to structure that in a way that it's still fun and exciting.
Tricking them into learning.
But it's, no, I think they get it, they're not tricked. But there's probably a lot of other 10,000-pound gorillas that are going to come out of the beginning of this conversation, but that's a good one.
Well, I have a high school student who's not very thrilled that her middle school sister gets to go outside, because she didn't when she was in school, so I hear about that. Why do they get to have recess when I didn't? But it's necessary, and I'm glad that we're learning, and we're developing, and we're saying, "Okay, we didn't do it this way, but, you know, this is what we're going to try now." And I would say to Tom, I was that fifth-grade parent that wanted my kid to stay in that classroom, and I have a sixth grader this year who has just grown immensely, and I was scared to death. And it doesn't work for all of them, but I really have seen wonderful things. So, I'm a big proponent of it, I think it really does work. There was one question I do have, and I struggle with this, and there may be people out in TV land that struggle with this, too, is the difference between a middle school and a junior high. I still am trying to figure out what, could someone, like, tell me?
I...
I mean, it's a philosophy.
There's a philosophical difference in that, in a nutshell, a lot of junior high models look more like a mini-high school. You change classes, it's leveled, there are smaller kids, but they sort of go through the same schedule. But there's a million nuances that we couldn't do justice to in this small amount of time, unless you all wanted to stay a lot longer. And quite frankly, I think doing more research is good, because the brain science has changed since middle school became a good idea. And it's changed since last year, so I think we owe it to ourselves to look at that.
Well, as we evolve as a district, you know, I mean, things change, that's one thing that's constant. Well, this is great, anyone else?
Well, and this would come into play if Oyster River is on board with us. So, again, we don't find out until May?
Well, to answer that, it's conceivable, we may know as early as late November, early December. It's still up in the air, but I think that is conceivable.
So, not next year, though?
I don't think it's May, but I think this coming, you know, I think we all set a goal, even the other night, we talked about it again. If we could have this whole thing analyzed and completed by the end of November, then that's a good thing for both communities. So, I think that's the goal we're working for, it's whether we'll achieve it, I don't know. But to answer another thing that you said, I put this, to convey to this community the full cost of sending high schoolers to Oyster River, I think we still need to know, and what are we doing for middle school? And that's why I brought this forward, because I see too big of a matrix of options. We could be a six, eight school, we could be a five, eight school. We could build across the street, we could consider an ad reno again, or we could do nothing, or do fire and life safety. And for me to work with architects between now and next fall, we need to narrow those field of options. You know, and as a board, I'd like you to be able to decide, I mean, decide at some point, we like five-eight, or no, we like six-eight. And then in terms of it's a construction project, is it still a new school across the street, or not? So that, so that when I work with Dan, and he is still here, yeah, when I work with Dan, he'll know, we're working towards one design, and get cost estimates on one design, and not multiple designs. Hopefully, you got enough information from doing the junior, senior high process, they have a feel for trying to make those decisions. I mean, I did dance here tonight to listen to this, but I did also invite him to our next meeting, so that he can talk with you about what it would mean to deal with just a middle school, either across the street or on the current site. So, I want to have that conversation next time, and you can ask him those questions. But my hope is that before we hit the end of the school year, you will have staked out a position on where you'd like to be, and then Dan and I can work over the summer and into the fall to get a sense. And so then we communicate to voters, here's what Oyster River costs us for high school, and here's what, if that were to happen, here's what we would do for middle school, and here's what that would cost.
I think it would be important to have community involvement, and have some forums, and hear...
On the grade configuration?
Well, just, yeah, the whole, the whole concept. I mean, it's going to impact a lot of people in many different ways. Financially, if you have children in the community, you know, I just, I think, now whether we can do that before the end of the school year or not, I mean, I don't know, if anyone else thinks that...
Also, asking the teachers, you know, getting a survey, or having them come and voice their concerns, their question, support or not support, you know, and any ideas that they might have to help with, if it's a viable option for that. Because that's going to impact them as well, it's going to add a lot of work, so what needs to be done?
The thought that I had was to contact the PTA, I have no idea what they have for meetings between now and the end, but perhaps at one of their meetings, "Are you done for the year?", is that what you're telling me?
No.
Oh, good. That maybe there'd be room, and that would draw more people to your meeting, to talk about five-eight, six-eight at a meeting like that.
Well, I'm just going to...
I agree, public forums make sense, yeah.
I'm kind of like, I work in a research field, so I'm kind of like a research nerd, so I don't know if there are, like, periodical articles that you guys read that you could, like, email to me, so I could, like, read about some of the stuff, because it just really intrigues me. You could, like, email, not like volumes or anything, but the brain science stuff, and that kind of stuff, I would love.
Yes, there are.
I would love to read that kind of stuff.
It, just from this point, I just want to share my opinion, that I just really see this as a great opportunity to, I mean, even if it's a wash, as far as delivery of education to kids, if we can get rid of the overcrowding at the elementary school, get rid of those portables, those, particularly the ones that are oh-sovery-old, take the pressure off of the, some of the classrooms that are used for preschool programs. There's really a lot of strain in that building now. We haven't been talking about it, because we've been looking at where the greatest need is, but there's a lot of need in that building, and, boy, if we can solve that problem, it's good stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
It is. You know, it's better to have more options than not enough, so.
Well, unless you've got a matrix the size of Dr. Denny.
Well, I know, I know.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. So, we'll have Dan come back next meeting, and we'll be part of the discussion there.
Keep learning.
And we'll contact our PTA, and if that doesn't work, then I'll set some other forum opportunity up.
Okay. Thank you for all that work, guys.
Yeah, that's very good.
Thank you.
Someone left their glasses, do these belong to anyone?
You know, I think they were there...
I found them yesterday.
I know, I saw them in this room.
Yeah, because I found them underneath the chair last night when we were...
Well, if you're watching, your glasses are here.
This afternoon, we were interviewing in here.
No, I found them the first night.
Oh, did you?
Pretty blue case.
They're women's glasses, I found them in the back row, so I just wanted to put it out there publicly, so if you lost your glasses, we have them.
In a blue case, why don't you hold it up again?
We'll put it, we'll have a little slide running, Lost and Found on Channel 13. Nice, I could vanna them for you. Okay, it's too late now. Moving on, yes. All right, correspondence.
Uh, no correspondence.
No correspondence, so that brings us to business department update.
Um, I hope you all received the email that I sent, was everybody able to open it? Because I was just a little concerned with the size of it.
Yeah, I haven't been able to get mine, and...
Yeah, same for you.
Well, I did get your email.
You did get mine.
But when I clicked on it, it did the spinning donut of doom.
Oh, yes. So, I also provided you a handout of it as well, so...
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
I'm sorry that I didn't open for you, and you didn't have a chance to review it. But I just will point out that the single sheet that I handed, that's the revenue report. We're still working, like I said, because we're the beta site for INCODE, there are some changes that still have to happen. It does say budget report, but it's actually the revenues. So, I'll just quickly review that, as you can see. We're still receiving revenues for, you know, the district assessment, these lines, hold on a second. We've got Medicaid still coming in, and the state education tax still coming in. So, we're looking to be in very good shape for what I estimated for the revenues. Does anybody have any questions about the revenues at all?
Could you just say, like, what, you know, where we're at, so people can, who don't have access to this, where... You're saying we're very good, could you just explain for us, non-numerical people?
Sure, well, let me catch your name, because I don't want to... As Martha had mentioned, that one of the changes in the legislation was the adequacy aid. So, there was a potential that we were going to have about a $27,000 decrease in our aid, and that was fully restored. So, I'll just let you know that information first and foremost. But as of right now, it appears that we are going to receive 100% of our estimated revenues, if not a little bit more, at this time, so that's what that means for people who are watching. I'll move along to the expenditure reports. As you can see, it's twenty-three pages, it's rather in-depth, I gave you the detailed report. If I knew the system currently at the moment will not allow me to encumber benefits and payroll and things of that nature, so I can't show you that, but what I do is, I went through an exercise to kind of project where we fall right now, just to remind those folks at home that we're in a current budget freeze. And given the current status, I'd like to, you know, commend the staff, the administrative team, for a wonderful job. We are in the black, even though we've had some heavy headers with out-of-district placements come in, and that nature, so nobody hold me to this at the moment, because we still have two months to go, but we are roughly looking about a seventy thousand dollar fund balance, if I were to project it right now.
Wow.
And that's, like I said, we still have two months to go, so if anything, it can change, but we're in the black, so we're doing really good with trying to recoup some of the costs that we've had. If you look on the expenditure report that I gave you on page one, you can see that the twelve-hundred, which is a special education, is in the red, eighty-one thousand dollars. So you can kind of see, that's where some of the reasons for the budget freeze, and we're trying to recoup that, and we're doing a very good job with that at the moment, so, great job to the staff. That's all I got?
You're looking at me like I have questions.
Mm-hmm.
And I do. The, I think you've answered my first one already, but I was, while reviewing this, it struck me that there weren't a lot of things encumbered that, what the rules are, how, what you need to, what you need to be as far as when you encumber things. But it seemed to me that you could put a lot of stuff in that column, and then easily see where we're going to land at the end of the year. But it sounds like that there's a functionality problem we're working out with the software?
Let me just clarify, so for payroll and benefits, which is like the salaries, the health insurance dental, I can't, we cannot encumber those at the moment, it, the system is not-
We should be able to.
We will be able to, just not at this time that we can't. But the other encumbrances for, you know, for all the other functions are basically driven from what we call requisition. So, a staff member would do a requisition, which creates a purchase order, that encumbers funds. So we do have the encumbrance capability for all the other functions, just not through the payroll module. So anything that's going through payroll, we can't. So, and it's position-based, I, I know I'm getting a little technical, sorry, but you would think what happens is, when we deduct health insurance premiums from the employee and the employer, it goes into a liability account, and then the system will actually cut that check, and that's through the, the payroll module, so that's why we can't encumber it. It's not like I can encumber it and cut a PO to our health insurance provider, it's all done through the position-based. So it's coming down, but it's not ready to go.
So the connectivity of that payroll module to this somewhere?
Yes, yes. Yes, it's all position-based, and the position basis, the position base isn't, I don't want to say it's not fully functional, it's not set up, this program was built for municipality, and their personnel is a lot different, as you know, than a school system. So they're going through that, the changes, so it takes time for them to write the programs for the system to do it, so. But I, like I said, it will do it, it's just, we can't do it. They're hoping it was going to be a fourth quarter rollout, but I'm thinking it's going to be more like probably a first quarter. So you'll see that next year.
Of our year.
Of our year, July. God bless you.
You, you commended the, the cost, the cost control and the budget freeze in that piece. I have a sense that that's probably not without pain, what-
Absolutely.
Because we've, we started with a tight budget, and now we've put the screws to it for things that hadn't been effectively encumbered yet. What aren't we doing that we would have been purchasing?
We, it goes through a process, so everything has to be approved by the administrative level, so it would have to be approved by the building principals first, then to myself. It would be things like, you have to, if you're going to bring a proposal and ask for the funds, you need to have some support. So it could be like a possible project, it could have been the, I'm trying to think of an example. It's hard for me to say, because I don't see the pain as much as the building principals see the pain. They could probably speak to that more than I could, because it doesn't get to me, because they're kind of-
They take care of it before-
They're in the front lines, if you will, okay, so, and they both left, so. But, you know, it's things, you saw this last year, you had a budget freeze last year. We really are, we're focused, and we're determined that if you don't, if it's, if you really need it, you can have it. But if you could really work around, then we ask that you do, during these difficult situations. So it could be supplies, it can be maintenance, maybe we could put that maintenance project off, maybe we can defer it. Maybe we could use other resources, you know, to pay for that fix, it's things of that nature, so.
So we might be putting off expenses to a later time, which runs a higher risk that, that repair, you know, putting off of the oil change, and now I need a ring job.
Same thing with like athletics, you know, you know, some of those things that they're not replacing their equipment, that is really outdated and stinky and gross.
Cafeteria tables.
Yeah, the cafeteria tables. We're kind of patching the bleachers, for example, that, you know, when I went through the budget process, we looked at, they're, they're going to be deemed unsafe at some point, and it's a twenty-two thousand dollar fix. So, you know, that's part of the budget process that we had to eliminate. So, we're just patching it and kind of slapping a band-aid on and moving on. I mean, those are some of the things that you just, you have to make it work, so.
I would add, though, we do have them inspected.
I was going to say-
Oh, yes, yeah, no, 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 there's-
So leave it out there.
Oh my god, they're unsafe, don't sit in the bathroom.
Yeah, just thinking of the jump rope show I am.
No one's got to go to the high school anymore.
No, 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 no.
They were inspected this year, I forget what month, but they were inspected, but-
Scared the jesus out of me.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, didn't mean, didn't mean to do that.
Well, this is great, I think you're ever one step closer to where you want to be, and, I mean, it's just, it's a lot closer to where we've come from, from the big binders that we had to like look through all of this, so. What did you say, twenty-three pages is, seems like a lot, but it's, it's not, it's nice. Any other questions? No? All right, I'm sure we'll get more in the future. Now we need to move on to selection of construction manager.
That's me again. I was part of the construction manager selection committee, you'll hear me refer to as the CM committee. We were selected to review the egress project for the junior and senior high school. We received twelve interested candidates, just to kind of give you a little background, and we narrowed that field down to three, and those three were BPS, Bonne Page and Stone, Hutter, and Meridian Construction. We invited those three CMs to come and tour the facilities, and they were at that time able to ask us questions, and we went through that process. Chris Andruski, Bob French, Dan Beeson, myself, and Amy Thompson, who's a budget committee member, we interviewed the finalists yesterday. BPS did back out, so they rescinded their consideration, so we ended up having two interviews with Hutter and Meridian. I have to say that we deliberated for about an hour, it was a very tough decision to make. They were clearly both highly qualified, and we finally came to a consensus that we would like to recommend Meridian Construction for school board to approve as the construction manager services for the egress project.
Anyone have a chance to look over, no? Oh, that's right, because you didn't have an email. Do you have any questions? Because you were able to get this stuff in.
Yeah, they were big emails.
Yeah.
They were.
I guess, what were the, it's, this isn't strictly a decision we're making because they're the low bid, you know, where you're hiring a roofing vendor, that sort of thing. So, I'm curious as to what the criteria were for your decision-making, and I guess, if you could speak to that as far as partnerability, creativity, what have you?
Um, for, we all had different roles, we all saw things. For me, what I looked for, and I think the committee, I can speak for the committee on their behalf, is that we looked for experience in similar projects that they have done. We looked to see, we tried to get somebody local, we looked at bonding, to make sure that they can secure bonding, builders' risk policies, to make sure that, you know, we're not putting ourselves out there. But first and foremost, it was really the experience for schools. We really wanted a company that had a lot of experience with schools, who could work under a very tight time constraint, because we're talking about eight weeks, got to get it done. There is no, you know, room for error, this is the drop dead, you know, deadline, so how are you going to meet it? Was a lot of questions that we had, what is it going to take, you know, two weeks in, you can see that we're running behind. We really asked a lot of those in-depth questions, making sure they had the manpower to perform the job, and to make sure that they had a real grasp of the project, to make sure we stayed within the confined projections that we have for the project.
And they understand the structure of the building and-
Yep.
The limitations.
That's correct, because they did an actual walkthrough. That's why we asked them to come and see the facilities, you know, with the drawings, they have the drawings, and they came through and did that, so that they could ask any questions about, you know, what's behind here, what's behind that. I will say that it, it is a little critical that we approve a CM for the reason being that they need, they expressed to us that they want to get started next week, which means they really need to finish the drawings to be a hundred percent, because they're, I think, about ninety-five percent. So they have to finish drawings, they have to get product squared, you know, and come up with a plan, and so. Because it is definitely a tight timeframe, and, but they both reassured us, and we feel confident that we've made the right selection based on that.
I'm curious, would Dan want to give us, I mean, do you have any experience dealing with these people? Could you kind of give us your feelings?
Just to back up, Cliff asked some questions about, you know, what was the criteria? We actually wrote up a two-page criteria, what we're expecting. We actually gave them schedules of anticipated milestones, so they knew that upfront. They received the drawings and specs, the specs were about that thick, and there's about forty drawings. So it's pretty detailed, and they received that a week before the walkthrough, so they had a chance to download that, review it. So when they did the walkthrough, and we did them individually, a little different than a lot of other types of processes, so they were able to ask us, and we could ask them candidly, without having the competitor next to them, which is traditionally what happens. So it was really nice having the three of them come in separately. The dialogue was very, it was very light and, and very direct, you know, they, they saw what was there. They asked very specific questions, and we gave them very specific answers. All three of them, I have worked with them since mid-eighties in some fashion or another, some more than others, but they all have good reputations. We had people on the selection committee who also has experience in the construction world, so they were all looking at these folks from their venue of business, which was really pretty, pretty, pretty amazing, because there was questions that I wouldn't ask, but other people had it because of what they were doing. So it was really, really good. When they came to the interview, they were prepared, because we asked them, Christine kind of conducted the opening, and saying half hour, do your presentation, and half hour to dialogue. And the two of them, the first half hour, we had some cheat sheets on questions, and they answered fifty, sixty percent of them, just with their dialogue, so they, they knew what needed to be done. And then the question and answer, the comfort factor kept on growing, and then it was really a debate on which one. So it was, then they, and you could tell they already had a sense. Both companies already kind of predetermined some generic numbers for some of the mechanical, electricals, so they, they've already started to do their homework, it was pretty nice to see them. They both developed an idea of scope of work, they talked about where they would perceive where to start. They were very concerned about the principal and Bob's role, so they, they all talked about the right things. And they all done schools, which is very important, because it's an occupied building. It's very important, safety is going to be a big issue.
So when you say they're going to start next week, does that mean in the building next week? Or does that just mean they've got paperwork and all sorts of stuff that they, once they get, once we just give them the job, so to speak?
I'll defer that to Dan, because he knows, like, they will be in the building, but I don't really know what they're looking at.
The nice thing about it is they understood that there are some long lead items, and some of it is millwork. Chris and I sat down yesterday, and we need Chris and his staff to settle up on the millwork, and it's not anything major other than draws versus doors, we're just trying to define a few more fine tunes. But those things need to be ordered, so we need to finish up those drawings. They want to come in in the next couple of weeks, not to do any work, but to start popping some ceiling tiles, start doing some field dimensions, start seeing existing conditions. So, when we're done the drawings, and we're anticipating the end of the month, they are going to help us finish the drawings, because they're going to provide us input where we, we less some areas of gray, and we want them to be participants of that. That's the beauty of CM, they help us finish the drawings versus the traditional way. This is a existing building, and it's got a lot of little nooks and crannies, we want them involved with the nooks and crannies. Because they're going to give a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, and then they're going to go out to bid on your behalf. And both of them are willing to give a hundred percent back if there are savings, so that was another nice thing. They're not looking at split savings, they're very straightforward, they understand the school market. So those are the type of things I was looking for. So the idea is to finish the drawings, they need to do some investigation, we agree on it, and we're going to work on the contract with the attorney, Christine and I, so we get that already staged. We got a bunch of little paperwork just to finalize it all up. But the key is to get the documents, and they, they being very happy what, what needs to be done. And then, what happens after that, behind the scenes, they're going to start doing what they call shop drawings. They're going to take all the stuff that we specified, they're going to go to vendors, get some bids, start providing documents that we review as a final review of the millwork. Something like this here, we'll actually get the vendors, they would give them catalog cuts, sections, the details that we've developed in one level detail, they'll do the next one. Once we approve it, it goes in production, so some of these items are ten, twelve weeks out. And that's the whole idea, why we did all these documents so early in advance. So we're, we're not going to get caught halfway through the summer, and they're still waiting for materials. It'll be a kiss of death if that happens.
So there's just, there's minimal disruption to students, basically?
Yeah, until we go in June, yes.
You won't even know that they're there.
Yeah.
Because they'll be coming in the night, it's not during the day.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, and they'll work with Bob, and they'll work with Chris.
How can we support the, the staff whose classrooms are going to be most impacted as far as packing up their things, relocating for the summer?
We've already started to have that dialogue with Christine and Chris about having the CMs also involved, because some of the stuff may be put in different parts of the building versus all boxes. So we, that's going to be one of the dialogues, what's their schedule? How they're going to attack it, are they going to attack it from one end to the other, or both? And so there might be some methods of storing stuff on-site, if we can cover and protect them. There's definitely a lot of the items, especially in the science labs, where the glassware and all that has to be removed and boxed.
Well, and then set back up before the start of the school year, so I, I don't know if there's anything that, like a stip, if you give stipends for teachers who need to relocate their rooms, or, I mean, how, how would you-
Right now, we're giving this time involved, because at the end of the school year, we have an exam period, it's open campus. And so there's, there's, if we, if you simply relocate the exams, then those rooms are available throughout the day to start packing up and moving things. So we'll have an entire week to move, box and move, and again, the moves aren't very far. For the most part, things were going to the, to the science room in the back, the physical science room, because it's- So we'll have an entire week to move, box and move. And again, the moves aren't very far. For the most part, things were going to the, to the science room in the back, the physical science room, because there's very little going on in there, so.
But as far as during the summer, once the rooms are done, assisting the staff to get their classrooms up and running?
Yeah, we're gonna develop a schedule that the staff can come in early to start emptying their boxes in the new millwork, in the new spaces, new renovated spaces.
And I think the designs, you worked with the staff that were being impacted, didn't, didn't they have?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think they've really tried to.
Yeah, Chris is doing one more round here before he goes.
One other thing we need to do more work with is, is that in the, in the, the room that's being created as a new life science lab, Dan's right, there's millwork that's going in there, but there's also some new loose furniture, science lab tables and stools and whatnot, and so they need some help, I think, in sorting those out and getting to some competitive pricing.
Right.
Because if you, you just, you don't accept prices in catalogs.
Right, right. We, we gave the school district some, some vendors who do educational-type furnishings that we've worked with before. So those people will be coming in. That needs to be done sooner than later, because also, if you order the stuff, it takes time to fab. Everything out there right now, there's nothing on the shelf. Everything is ordered and they, they build, unfortunately. So it's hard sometimes. You gotta plan ahead.
Any questions?
Well, just a comment in that reviewing the, the documents that were, were provided, the, the list of references is quite extensive for, for both of them. But I'm a little bit more struck by the, the packet that Meridian put together with the, you know, the experience with a lot of smallish renovation. I mean, you know, if you want to call a million and a half dollar project small. But there's an extensive list of experience with similar projects, reconfiguring classrooms in, in Concord High School, Manchester, HVAC renovation in Concord, Hubbard Hall over at UNH, the State Library. You know, some of them places that I can foresee, like perhaps a dormitory that they've got plenty of time in the summertime, well, a limited amount of time in the summer to get work done. But at the State Library, I'd imagine that that's something that you would want to just close and say, sorry, public, you don't have a library for a while. So it seems to me that they've included a lot of references for, for time-sensitive and buildings that are, that probably have some interesting challenges through years of renovation and what have you, that I'm gonna bet that will be a case study for, hmm, didn't expect to see that.
Those nooks and crannies you talked about.
Yeah, and that, that was a lot of, of the dialogue that the committee was asking question. I kind of sat in back. Most of the dialogue was with the committee. But we're getting the right answers, and in both parts. And one of the unique things I heard, can be from the back, there was one dialogue to the site super from Meridian about what makes you think you can get this thing all done? And the site super's experience with Meridian has been, I think, in the order of like 15, 16 years. And he started off doing mostly renovations and additions, and he got pegged to do more of that, because he was good at it. And that's all he's done, is renovations, additions. So it kind of impressed the group. I saw a bunch of eyebrows go up. That's what he does, and he says, and he did it with a smile. I was like, okay, this guy, this is crazy.
No one's winning.
You know, he likes to do these things.
He likes the challenge.
He likes the challenge, and, and that's his cup of tea. And I, I think that kind of made everybody feel like a little more comfortable, even though they didn't have the same portfolio as Hutter. Because Hutter definitely has a large portfolio. They're an older company, second generation. So their portfolio is very impressive. But we gotta get this thing done, and that was, a lot of the dialogue was focused, how do we get this done? How can we work people? The daily communication is so important, especially with Bob and Chris, and of course Christine and I, because we're gonna have to take care of issues that come up and be on board. So that, that was, you know, back and forth, it says it took over an hour deliberation, and it was like everybody's heads were spinning. So it took some time to figure out which one, but it was back and forth, back and forth. I actually did a criteria sheet, a layout, and they were very similar. It was asking detailed questions of how they operate their businesses, like 12 pages. And I categorized them in different areas of where they pass all the work, the subcontractors within the GMP, within general requirements. And when I did it, they were really pretty close. Even their fee, it was identical. That was all in an envelope, unopened, until we were all done. They both submitted a fee of 5%, identical. I was kind of like, wow, usually there's always some deviation, but, and, and that was sealed envelopes.
I find it comforting that was a hard decision.
Very hard.
Because that tells me that there's no wrong answer, perhaps?
Right.
So maybe this should move to a motion?
Yeah, I would, um, be happy to make a motion to recommend working with Meridian Construction. Is that engaging?
As our construction manager.
Meridian Construction as our construction manager for the upcoming renovation project in the junior, senior high school.
Right.
And I'll second that.
Are there any discussion? I think we've pretty much discussed it to death. All right. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I see none. So, there you go.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Hit the ground, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Hit the ground running.
Yay!
Yeah, thanks for everyone's hard work.
All that work, yeah. So are you interested? You can keep these.
I'm sorry, I missed the fun.
Oh, don't worry.
I had my own fun in jury duty.
That's right. I couldn't remember where you were.
Okay.
Yeah, Gail was part of that.
I was, yeah.
Because she missed the last, the last thing because of jury duty.
All right, so policy.
You have three policies here for your approval. The first two relate to reporting child abuse and neglect. The first one is, is a significant change, an upgrade to, to reflect changes in the RSAs and code administrative rules on the process. It's, it's more prescriptive than what we had before, such that the, the associated policy JLF-r needs to be deleted. So it's approve revision to JLF and delete JLF-r.
Do I hear any motions?
You bet. I would like to make a motion to approve the policy, reporting child abuse neglect, JLF, as presented.
Great. Any discussion?
Just a question. The, the last paragraph of the policy reads, "The board recommends that all school district employees receive routine training or information on how to identify child abuse and neglect." Can you speak to frequency of that, you know, how we go about that?
I would think annually. It's something we'll put in our, our protocol manual, and I'll review with administrators, and we'll pick an appropriate time, probably the beginning of the year. They have plenty of time in the opening, opening meetings to go through all these policies.
And that would be not just for new employees, but all employees?
Yes, for everybody. Right, right.
Including guest teachers or substitute teachers that come in? Is there an orientation for that?
They do do orientations in the buildings with the subs, so, yeah, I can have that.
I think it'd be important.
Yep.
So that doesn't fall under professional development? That's just part of their opening days at the school?
Yeah, if you remember, and you, you folks haven't seen it before, but I will, I will get your copies once we update it. We have a, what's called a protocol manual for administrators, and, and it's a compilation of all kinds of different policies and procedures in the district that I review annually with administrators. And among them are policies like this, and there'll simply be a note in there, "At your opening meeting, review this with staff. Remind staff annually." So there's a lot of, so there's new administrators come in, they've got, they've got the, the book that says, okay, what do I do in opening day, and what do I do throughout the year? If I have this issue, it's a great place to go for answers, so, so we just add this.
I have one other question. The third paragraph, well, actually, it's the first paragraph, second paragraph, because the first one's deleted. But, "The principal shall make a written report within 24 to 48 hours." Who, is that report to? Is that to DCYF? Is that to the superintendent? I was just wondering, he's making the report, but where is it going?
Uh, to, to the superintendent. It really falls, flows, I think, from the, the sentence before.
So, because it says, "The principal will then notify the superintendent that a report has been made." And then it says, "The principal shall make a written report." So first, the principal has to notify you that someone in the building made a report, but then I look at it, that the principal needs to make a written report, and I was just curious.
Here is. You're the employee that, that has this report to be made. You make it directly, as it says in the first sentence.
DCYF, yeah.
Right, okay. And then you need to inform your, your principal.
Right.
And then, and that's within 24 hours, and then the principal needs to inform the superintendent within 24 to 48 hours. So maybe the paragraph split doesn't fit.
Could we, would it be redundant to say, "The principal shall make a written report to the superintendent within 24 to 48 hours"?
Sure, you can put that, yeah.
It just seems, maybe it's too much, but clarity.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So I guess we've discussed it to death, so.
So I don't see that as a substantive change to affect my motion to approve.
No.
So it's not like we have to send it back and come back?
Just clarifying.
It's just a clarifying kind of thing, okay. All right, so all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion passes.
And then policy JLF-r, now that this is approved, becomes unnecessary. It's outdated language. It's really, the protocol is now in JLF. So you need to vote to delete the policy JLF-r.
I'd like to make a motion to delete policy JLF-r, reporting child abuse slash neglect.
Second? Any, I guess else I could do?
I was going to, but I didn't want to be a second motion hog. You know what I mean?
That's quite right. There's only four of us.
I want to share. I want to share. I, I mean, in the minutes, I love seeing my name in bold, you know?
All right.
But I'll let you have this one.
Any discussion? I think it's pretty straightforward. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And the, and the third policy is, is kind of a carryover to some policy change that we did before, similar to what I just accomplished with you there. We had updated a policy within which it included language about annual notification of rights under FERPA. And when we did that, and this was, I think, maybe last February, what we should have done is, is delete this policy. It was just an oversight. We didn't do it. So please delete this. Don't worry that the, the proper language about annual notification is included in another policy. I forget which one.
I'll make a motion to delete policy JRA-r, annual notification of rights under FERPA.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. All right, moving right along. Resignations.
F3. First is Lindsay Beardsley, who's an elementary teacher. She has submitted her resignation. She's been on maternity leave and won't be returning. She's a terrific teacher, but I'm sure she, she made the right decision for her. And so I, I don't have a signed letter from her, but at this point here, I think we need to, we need to take action. She certainly has communicated her resignation to the principal on this email.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Lindsay Beardsley, elementary school teacher, pending receipt of her formal letter.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
The, typically, the, the board allows me to handle the hiring, hiring and termination of employees that are classified, non-certified staff, and UGCertified. But these next two, even though they're non-certified staff, they're longstanding employees that it's gonna be very, very tough to see go. So I thought you'd want to be presented with this and the opportunity to, to express your regrets. But Edie Bodett, elementary administrative assistant, her notice of retirement. So it'll be tough to see her go, yeah.
She's the travel coordinator for the elementary school. When you, you know, need to find where your child is.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Where my child go.
Oh, she's great, yes. I put in my superintendent's report, I forget the number of years. Let me see if I can find it.
It's a lot.
What's that? It was 32.
31. I have, I have 31. 31 years of service to the district, so. Thoroughly missed.
You don't go.
Yes.
I cried. I told her she had to stay one more year, and she's not. And she has grandchildren still there, so she's leaving before her grandchildren finish.
We have a motion?
Well, I like to see my name, I guess.
No, I think you do. You've established that.
And it's easy, easier for the recording secretary, I guess, to, to move along. So, um, I'll make a motion to accept the notice of retirement of Edith Bodett and, and thank her for her years of service.
And I'll ungraciously second it.
And I'll just say, it'll be sad to walk in those doors and not see her sitting there, but I completely understand. She has things to do with her family, so I wish her well. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last resignation, again, sorry to see her go, but just a.
Well, I say nay, actually.
You did?
You didn't ask. I say nay.
You're keeping us on our toes.
Nice try.
Next one.
The last resignation, not resignation, but another notice of retirement. Karen McIntosh goes by the name Kip McIntosh. Just a terrific person in the school, is a paraprofessional at the elementary school. And she too has given us her notice of retirement.
Do we know how many years? Do we have her years?
Again, that was my report. Did I just read 16? I think. My report.
Sorry. I was just curious.
Uh, no. 16. She's completing her 16th year of service.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the notice of retirement from Karen McIntosh, elementary school paraprofessional.
Unfortunately, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Thanks for your service.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Unopposed? Okay. Thank you. Nominations.
Yes, you have nominations of staff, again, certified staff, teachers and other, and other staff that are moving forward to the next year. So you need to approve these, and then we will very quickly afterwards, issue them contracts.
I'll make a motion to, um, should we do, is there a preference?
Might, might do one school at a time, probably, the elementary school teaching staff for the 2013-14 school year.
As you say, I will make a, a motion to accept the elementary school teaching staff nominations for the 2013-14 school year as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say that I, I mean, it's just wonderful to look down the list of years of service and, and it's amazing to add them all up. We are just very fortunate in this school district, in both schools. I mean, you can see that. All right, any other discussion? No? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next one.
No one's stepping up, so.
No. We, we don't want to steal your thunder.
It's for, it's because it's a. It's for, it's because it's a chair, you just.
You do the administration.
You can do it, guys.
I'll make a motion to accept the teaching staff for the junior, senior high school for the 2013, 2014 school year as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
And the last set of nominations are the administrators that serve our schools and the SAA.
We can have some fun with this.
Oh, it's late.
It really is. Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
To approve the list of district administrators for the year 2013 to 2014.
You can second it. I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That's all nominations.
Okay. Manifest.
I lost the manifest.
Did it make its way around?
Yes, it did.
I know, I haven't signed it yet.
I'll make a motion to accept the total of all manifests in the amount of $473,425.3.
I'll second it.
Discussion, no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Calendar. I don't have a calendar for some reason.
Would you like to share mine?
I guess. I just don't have to show up for the next two months. Sorry.
Wait a minute.
No, 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 it's fine. Anything?
School vacation next week?
Oh, junior prom. Wow.
Already?
May tenth. Can't believe it. Some pretty excited kids out there. Oh, yeah, May fourteenth, 7:00 AM, voting for the child commission position at the town hall. Make sure you show up for that.
And then there's a candidate's night.
Candidate's night on the seventh.
Oh, yeah, you might want to come to that first and then come on the fourth. Oh, 7:00 PM, induction of the National Honor Society on May 22nd. That's always, now is that, that's both, isn't it? Isn't that junior and senior? Yeah, that's what I thought.
And that's typically held in the elementary school gymnasium or cafeteria.